Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills, 22-0254 and 22-0365. In attendance today, we have members of the committee. Brian Dorsey of the Third District, Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District, Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District, Mark Conway of the Fourth District. And we also have Councilmember Zeke Cohen of the First District joining us. He is co-sponsor with me of the first bill we're going to hear. Also, representatives from the President's Office. We have on line Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director of Legislation. And also Representatives of the Office of the Mayor. We have Sophia G. from Governmental Relations. And I also see Nina Themelis, Director of Government Relations. And we also have Erin DeGraffan-Reed from Office of the President here. Okay, let's begin. Bill number 22-0254, Office of Aging Independent Agency? For the purpose of establishing an office of aging as an independent agency, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of the Director of the Office, establishing duties of the Office, providing for the staff and budget of the Office, requiring the adoption of certain rules and regulations, requiring the Office to submit an annual report to the Mayor and City Council, establishing the Commission on Aging to advise and collaborate with the Office, providing for the appointment, structure, and governance of the Commission, requiring the Commission to submit an annual report to the Director, requiring Commission members, the Director and other staff of the Office, to file financial disclosures under the Ethics Code. And this bill was introduced on July 15, 2022. And that's been almost, we're getting close to a year. So, we know a lot of work has been done to restructure and really make this office a viable office and just really give our older adults in Baltimore City an elevation overall, just to really extend and work with the needs of our older adults, the senior centers, just make our outreach even more productive. There's always room for improvement, really, in every agency. And I want to thank the Health Department and the Mayor's Office and the Mayor for listening to my colleague and myself, my colleague Zeke Cohen and myself, and the entire council for really supporting this bill. And the Health Department working with us tirelessly to just give this office attention. And you have done just that. And at the end of the day, our older adults in Baltimore City are, you know, just going to be so thankful. I know in my travels, the word is kind of already out there. And they're just so excited and just looking forward to move this bill forward so our mayor can sign it and we can really get to work and give that attention to our older adults. And before I move on, I'd like Councilman Cohen to have an opportunity to also join in on these comments.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I want to echo your thanks to the Health Department, Deputy Commissioner Tan, Julia, the whole team. Also want to really thank Deputy Mayor Girasa for working very closely with us on this legislation, Nina, the Mayor's Team as well. And I also really want to thank you, Madam Chair, our Vice President of the Council. I know this has been a real passion of yours for a long time, and it is one that we share. And so, I've appreciated your guidance and leadership on this issue. And you're absolutely right, we've been doing it for about a year. In that time, we've been to the Zeta Center, we've been to multiple senior center, we've seen senior housing, we've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly when it comes to our older adults in Baltimore. We know that this is a population that has, yes, many challenges, but is also a true asset and a blessing to our city. Baltimore is a place that has many multi-generational households where, when I was a teacher, I would see grandparents that were raising not only their own kid, but their grandkids. And our older adults are wisdom keepers, they are our gateway into the future, they are truly folks that we look to in Baltimore and across this country for our path forward. And as someone who was blessed to have a grandmother that was incredibly active in my life, I know I would not be here without my grandma. And so, this bill really means a lot to me personally. We know that older adults is an aging, is a growing population in our city, and again, in our country. We know that they have complex needs, but that, again, they are a true asset. And so, our hope in elevating this office and making it a cabinet-level office is that we are showing the same respect and admiration and love for our seniors that they have shown to us over all of these years. So, again, I really appreciate just the partnership from the administration, from Madam Chair, as we've sought to negotiate and think about how this can work and how we can still keep some of the assets within the Health Department. And again, appreciate the Mayor's commitment during the budget season to this work. We know that we are going to need partners across Baltimore to make this office as great as it can be. We look forward to working with the Schools of Social Work, senior centers, folks who are in community, in neighborhood, who can be those organizers and those liaisons. But we appreciate the Mayor's Team for working with us to find half a million dollars to make sure we can get a Director onboard and a planning grant. We are not going to stop. We are going to make sure this office is robust and that we treat our elders with the kind of respect that they deserve. So, with that, I thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, appreciate your partnership as well. And I would be remiss if I didn't also include the Commission on Aging. I know that they are just elated as a member of that Commission and have been longstanding members since I've been a councilperson. This has always been a subject that we continue to bring up at Commission meetings, how we can elevate and enhance our older adult population. And this, I know that they are just excited. And also, again, a shout-out to all the other agencies that have partnering services with the Health Department, Housing and Community Development, the Department of Recreation and Parks, continue to have activities that help our older adults. And as you said, Councilman Cohen, elevating this office to a cabinet-level position will put that subject matter at the forefront, in conversations at the table. And that's what we try to continue with, just everything that we do as councilmembers is to always make sure that there's a seat at the table for our older adults as well as our youth. It's all about intergenerational work that our city so desperately needs. So...
Can I give one more shout-out to...
You sure can.
Appreciate that, thank you, Madam Chair. Mary Pat Clark, who, of course, is a mentor to many of us in this chamber. This was really her baby. You know, Mary Pat, when we were coming up, she would tell us about just how powerful the Commission was. And when it was a standalone office, that you couldn't run for Mayor or anything without coming and talking to folks, specifically the Commission on Aging and the Office of Older Adults. And I just remember how passionate Mary Pat was about feeling like this needed to be its own standalone office because we weren't giving our seniors the respect that they deserved and that there was this gap that folks were feeling in their relationship to the city. And so, I do want to, of course, put Mary Pat's name out there in this chamber. I know literally all of us in this room have a relationship with the Councilwoman. And I don't think we'd be here doing this without her leadership as well.
You mentioned her name, you're making me think of the Group Experience Corps and how she was also a strong advocate for that. And this committee will be hearing a bill next month named after her as well. So, thank you for including former Councilmember Mary Pat Clark in these efforts as well. So, are there any other comments? I want to recognize also, member of the committee, Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, on that note, since there's no comments, we'll go ahead and start to, it's important that we do hear from the agencies again as a refresher before we take our vote and move this bill out of committee so the Mayor can sign this. And we'll start with the Health Department. I know there's amendments that, some very good amendments, a lot of them are technical, but you, I'd like you to go over them and recognize yourself. So, the Health Department, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Julia Roche, I'm the Legislative Affairs Director with the Baltimore City Health Department. And I am accompanied today by my colleague Deputy Commissioner Hyung Tan, who oversees our Division of Aging and Care Services. Thank you for allowing us to collaborate with you and the Mayor's Office on these amendments. And I'm going to pass it over to Deputy Commissioner Tan to walk through those amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to members of this committee for this hearing and your commitment to older adults and your stark advocacy for elevating the issues in the community. Again, my name is Hyung Tan, I serve as Deputy Commissioner of Aging at the Health Department. Our mission at the Division of Aging is to serve as the area agency on aging for Baltimore City designated by the State of Maryland. And through this division, we plan, coordinate, and deliver services to help older adults maintain their independence. We've enjoyed working collaboratively with the bill sponsors, the administrations on the amendments of this bill, and we request a favorable position on Council Bill 22-0254. The major amendments highlighted, there are two amendments in Section 14-4, excuse me, as I read through them. The first is to assure that the role of the Office is to be an independent evaluator of city services for older adults and to educate the public about these services. Second, to expand the portfolio of issues the Office will address so that older adults can have a good quality of life. Third, clarify that the Office of Aging will not manage programs directly administered by the city, state, or federal agency. Fourth, assure that the Office is an advocacy and educational agency, and we removed any language that implies the agency can change federal or state regulations that are not under the control of the city. And lastly, in Section 14-4, create a more holistic vision of the Office' mission regarding broad planning and advocacy. The Office will then lead a planning process involving multiple stakeholders to create an age-friendly city. The second piece of amendments pertains to the Commission on Aging. Section 1411 is amended to modernize the membership and mission of the Baltimore City on Aging to reflect the changing face of aging in Baltimore City. Second, it brings new stakeholders to the Commission, including faith, communities, and consumer education educations. And third, it changes the name and makeup of the Commission to reflect a more positive, empowering vision for aging. Older adults are assets, as Councilman Cohen had mentioned, and the new name referred in the bill is the Commission on Aging Resources and Empowerment. Those are the major changes to the amendments. I mean, those are the major amendments in the bill.
Thank you, Deputy Tan. Any member of the committee have any comments about these amendments? Thank you. I also want to recognize that she is present here, and that's Dr. Girasa, which has been elevated herself to, in the Mayor's Office. So, we know that she's, we have an advocate that's going to be paying attention as that, as this office becomes a office on aging. Is there anyone from the Commission of Aging that would like to make a quick comment before we move forward? Or...
Madam Chair, no member. The Commission on Aging submitted a written testimony...
Thank you.
...in favorable of the bill amendments.
Thank you. City Solicitor's Office, Elena.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena Di Pedro for the City Solicitor's Office. I apologize for my little technical difficulty earlier. The Law Department has reviewed the bill and has approved of her form of lead sufficiency. We'd like to remind the council and the Health Department when making changes that we can't provide for things in this ordinance that would conflict with any other powers in the Charter. I think right now, that does not seem to be happening, so we should be okay. The other thing we wanted to make clear was that, as far as the composition of the Commission is concerned, that we have to, you cannot compel private citizens or private entities to serve. So, it might be a process of finding someone from, who's willing to serve rather than compelling them to serve.
Thank you. We have to start from somewhere.
One thing I do want to mention as well is I haven't had the opportunity to review the amendments.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Mara James, Assistant Budget Director for the Department of Finance. We have not been able to review the amendments to see the changes, but we understand the intent behind them and know that as part of the fiscal '24 budget, we have the authority to support. As Councilwoman Cohen spoke about having a director, I have a planning grant for this office. So, that's all.
So, are you supporting, based on those...
I'm supporting the CD amendments.
Okay. Thank you for that. It's not, oh, push your button, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Sophia from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, on behalf of the Ethics. They approve the bill.
Thank you. Do any committee members have any comments or questions? And we don't, let me check one more time, but we don't have any added public testimony online. Is there anyone present that would like to make any final comments?
Madam Chair, could we briefly go to Nina from the administration? I think there may be some confusion over the amendments.
Yes, Nina.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I believe that the amendments that you have before you today do not include everything that Deputy Commissioner Tan outlined in her comments. And so, I did just want to flag that for the committee, that there was an error in our communication with the Department of Legislative Reference in ensuring that all of those amendments were before you. Everything that was being proposed to be amended into the bill is what was outlined by the Deputy Commissioner, but the package of amendments that you have before you only includes a portion of that.
And will we get those complete amendments before the next council meeting, before it goes to second reader?
Absolutely. We'll have all the amendments too before second reader, as well as ensuring that all of the agencies referred have reviewed them and approved them.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Councilman Stokes.
My colleague Cohen, I know you recognize Mary Pat, but me and Mary Pat said in this lot of hearings didn't talk about making this a cabinet position, but I have a question for finance. Can you tell me how much money that was put in the budget for this position?
Yes, we have $500,000 to put into the position, and then we have a director position.
So, my question is, is that enough money? In terms of, because when you, I remember this position when Kirk Smoak was the mayor. It was a cabinet position. He had additional employees. So, how many employees, I know you're talking about the plan, about a director, how many employees can you hire out of the $500,000? Because if we don't have enough money, it's like it's still in the Health Department and nothing gets to the Health Department. If you don't have a full staff, how do we implement what we're trying to do with our seniors here in Baltimore City?
My understanding is that that's what we put in the year to be able to back the budget.
Okay.
So, it's not a position, and then we put out from there, we're doing what, best practices from other jurisdictions, and how to raise the fees that are involved, and other certain things that are required.
So, you don't know exactly how much the planning grant is going to be right now?
So, the budget is $500,000, but it includes funding for the position and the planning grant. I can just follow-up with you, which details of what the director position and budget is for, and whatever is left of what we can hire.
Can that be a request, Madam Chair?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Could you add that as a request? And submit that to Matt, and he'll distribute it to the committee. And Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to get an understanding on the amendments. What I see here is Amendment Number One, which is the change of the name. And it looks like the topics that the Deputy Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner was talking about. Then there's the Second Amendment, which is the composition of the Commission. The Third Amendment, which talks about the interaction with other agencies. And then a Fourth Amendment that just has a couple of other technical issues. What's missing?
I can answer that. Councilwoman, amendments to Section 14-4 have been all omitted. And so, the only amendments that you see are the composition of the Commission, and that is something that was done in error.
We see more than that in these amendments. I'm just trying to understand what the difference is.
So, the amendments, Amendment One in the first reader talks around the composition of the Commission. Again, Amendment Two discusses the membership of the Commission. Amendment Three discusses the ex-official membership of the Commission. And Amendment Four discusses how often and when the Commission meets.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the only thing that you're looking at are the amendments to Section 14-11.
And what will we be getting?
You will be getting amendments to Section 14-4 and 14-11.
So, we would be approving these in addition to those on second reader, is that correct? Or are we getting new version of these?
I believe so, but I defer to the Mayor's Office of Government Relations to speak on that.
Nina, my understanding, we're getting additional amendments.
That is correct. You would be moving these amendments that you see before you today in addition to the other section of amendments.
And so, the other sections will come to us on second reader?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear, thanks a lot.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to move for the amendments?
So moved.
So moved by Conway, second by Bullock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable with amendments? So moved by Conway, second by Bullock.
Ramos.
Oh, Ramos, okay. And now, we'll take our vote. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover absent.
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will now move to second reader. Thank you all for, again, the year or more work that you have been tirelessly working on this change. And it's definitely, again, a change for the better. I know in all of our districts, we are elated that this is happening, and we just can't thank you enough. Councilman, any final words?
No. Thank you again, Madam Chair, for all your leadership on this, and thanks for the, you know, this is a real collaborative effort, and we need more of that in Baltimore. And just want to, again, appreciate both the administration, the council, but also all the older adults that participated and that pushed on us and added their voice to this. I think that's really important, and that's what government is meant to do, is serve our people. So, again, just appreciate everybody and look forward to voting it out on second and third reader.
Thank you. And we'll get those final amendments before our second reader. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Tan, and now, I'm proud of you. Okay, moving on to the next bill. Number 23-0365, rezoning 601 through 621 East Biddle Street, 1101 through 1129 Forest Street, 602 East Chase Street, and 1100 Nursery Place for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 601, 603, 605, 607, 609, 611, 613, 615, 617, 619, and 621 East Biddle Street, 1101, 1103, 1105, 1107, 1109, 1111, 1113, 1115, 1117, 1119, 1121, 1123, 1125, 1127, and 1129 Forest Street, 602 East Chase Street, and 1100 Nursery Place, Block 1168, lots 15 through 42, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque from the R. 15 through 42, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Stokes, would you like to comment on the bill?
Yes, I'm probably one of the biggest supporters for Johnson Square, what's happening there. But I, I have said this to housing. The LDA that you give to Johnson Square, I'm expecting that to be in other parts of my district. They have 700 pieces of property. I have other CDCs in my district. I want them to get the same treatment when they want to do development also. And I've said this in front of housing, it's not something that I haven't shared with the Housing Commissioner, but I support Johnson Square. But I want other CDCs, not just in my district, around the city, have access to LDAs also. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The committee will now hear from agency representatives. We'll start with the Law Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hoxteller, on behalf of the Law Department. Law Department does approve this bill for forming legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Hello, my name is Imani Jasram with the Planning Department, giving the Planning Commission report. Thank you for reading all those addresses so that I did not have to in my report. So the Planning Commission reviewed Bill 23-0365 at their meeting on April 27th. For anyone who's not aware, this property is located within the Johnson Square neighborhood. The subject properties are located in the greater block bounded by Greenmount, East Biddle Street, Forest Street, and East Chase, with Nursery Place, which is a named alley running north-south through that block. That's why there's so many addresses. As required by state code, there are several findings that the council is required to find as part of this bill. There are two basic logics that support the rezoning, either that there was a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood where the property was located, or that there was a mistake in the existing zoning classification. Planning Commission agreed with staff findings that there was a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood where the property is located due to the creation of both the Johnson Square Vision Plan and the creation of the Johnson Square Impact Investment Area, both of which occurred immediately after the previous zoning. There are six required findings of fact and four additional standards that must be considered as part of this. I will read the justifications. Please bear with me, it might take a minute, but I will do my best to be as efficient as possible. So starting first with the findings of fact regarding population changes, number one, the Johnson Square neighborhood's population increased by 87 people from the 2010 census to the 2020 census. We welcome those 87 people to the community. The second regarding the availability of public facilities. Within the neighborhood, there currently is not a standard, a Pratt Library branch. As a result of this rezoning, a library could become the anchor tenant of a mixed-use development as would be allowed under the newly rezoned property. The developer is currently working with the library system to finalize that agreement to bring a library to the area, so that this could increase the amount of public facilities in the community. Regarding its impact on present and future transportation patterns, the rezoning is not likely to change present transportation. Any redevelopment that could add car traffic is unlikely to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. It is compatible with existing and proposed development for the area as it is directly called for in two of the existing plans for the area, specifically on this block. Regarding the recommendations of the Planning Commission and the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, the Plan Department recommended approval of the request to Planning Commission, which they found, the BMZA you will probably hear from when I start, stop talking. And again, staff believes that there was a significant change since the previous comprehensive rezoning in 2017 due to the creation of the Impact Investment Area afterwards, as well as the Johnson Square Vision Plan. Both of those involve substantial community outreach about what the future redevelopment in the community should be, since that feedback was not available at the time of the rezoning. Since it happened afterwards, there was a substantive change, and we believe that the rezoning is appropriate. Now on to our final four standards to find. It requires us to look at the existing uses of property within the general area of the property, well, now, properties in question. These properties are currently vacant lots. They are on a block with other vacant lots to me across the street from, I think, another multi, apartment building. The zoning classification of other properties within the general area, the rest of the block on which these parcels are located is C1, if you think of the parcel as a rectangle, diagonal line running through the middle, half of it is C1, half of it is R8. This rezoning would make it all C1. The suitability of the property in question for use is permitting under existing zoning classification, that's number three, I'm almost done. So since the properties are currently vacant, they, in theory, could be developed as any of the primarily residential uses allowed under its current zoning classification. And the final standard regards the trend of development in the area since the property was rezoned. Again, these are in the priority zone 1A, so both alphabetically and numerically, this is a priority area and priority development project in the area. There's been a substantive trend towards rehabilitation of existing buildings, as well as demolition and new construction in the Johnson Square area. This rezoning quest, request is in line with the current planning and implementation efforts in the area. Planning Commission voted to recommend approval. Eight members were in attendance, and eight, all eight voted in favor.
Thank you. I, I hear you mentioned a library, so is, is a library relocating, or is this a new additional library in the city? A Pratt, is it going to be a Pratt library?
So it's planned to be a Pratt library. I don't know if they are relocating a branch, or if it's new. I just know that they are in that.
So that's still in the making?
Yeah.
Evidently, okay. Other comments, Councilman Stokes?
They are not relocating no library. It will be new development. New library, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments to the Planning Department before we move on to other agencies? Councilman Dorsey?
Just for the sponsor, th, these are currently city-owned properties?
That is Johnson Square LDA they have with housing.
So they already been sold, or are they?
They is already under Johnson Square LDA, land disposition agreement.
So?
So is, yes. They actually own hard a contract in it already. Already started some of the work on Biddle Street already. It's below Greenmount.
I'm sure Housing can elaborate when we get to that, to them. In fact, you can go ahead now if you want. Stephanie?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. The subject properties are located in, within DHCD's East Impact Investment Area and within our Community Development Zone. DHCD's development team has been working extensively in this area, engaging in acquisition and disposition of properties in the Johnson Square neighborhood, and working with HABC and private for nonprofit partners to steadily rehabilitate the vacant homes for families in the surrounding areas. The proposed rezoning may lead to the redevelopment of previously cleared vacant lots into new housing, and we do support the passage of this bill.
Okay, does that answer your question, Councilman Dorsey?
Uh, no, I'm just really trying to get a really straight, clear answer.
So he wants to know?
And it's not really about this bill. I'm trying to understand processes as they might differ from one land disposition agreement to the next. I, I want to, I'm trying to understand whether we are rezoning these properties that we intend to sell, or whether we are rezoning these properties that we are in the process of selling, or we're rezoning these processes which we have already sold.
Planning, would you, you or Housing answer that? Or help with the clarification of these properties?
Sure. These are proper, properties that are currently owned by DHCD, and this is a rezoning. These are cleared vacant properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll also add for clarification that they're currently city-owned, and planning has also been, this is project that's part of this rezoning, has also been moving through planning's approval processes, both for variances in front of BMZA, as well as the UDAP and Site Plan Review Committee, so.
Thanks. And for clarification, I'm asking this because I also have bills in for properties in my district to rezone them where we don't actually have a land disposition plan for them yet, but the intent is to rezone in order to make them more viable for redevelopment. But, you know, several people have looked at me like I had two heads when I proposed that we should upzone these properties, even though we don't have a plan for them yet. But I think it's smart to upzone properties, so that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. BMZA?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. BMZA, first to planning for this bill. Thank you.
Okay, so that means it's a favorable report. Department of Transportation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name's James Turner, representing the Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report in support of the advancement of Council Bill 23-0365. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luis Cardona, on behalf of the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our bill report favorable.
Thank you. And could you just share, I guess, with the public, your role, BDC's role in this development project?
BDC does not have a role in this development project because these are not property stewarded by BDC.
Thank you for the clarification. And the Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fran Bernzinski with the Parking Authority. The Parking Authority has no opposition to the rezoning.
Thank you. Does the committee members have any comments or questions thus far? Okay, we'll now take public testimony, and we have one person that has signed up to testify. Al Berry?
We're just here to say that we have people in the audience that can answer the specifics of the development, although that's not why the zoning is necessarily tied to. But we're here to answer any questions. The Plan Department did a, you know, I think, a thorough job in giving the council committee the reasons to justify the rezoning in and of itself.
Thank you for your testimony. And so now we'll go online. If there's anyone that would like to testify online, please use the raise hand button to let us know. And I don't see any raised hands, so we'll now move to phone callers. Any phone callers that would like to testify on this bill? And there are no phone callers. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Hearing none. The committee heard testimony and recommendations to support the legal standards and findings, and we have no amendments at this time. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable? Moved by Stokes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ramos. And we're now taking our vote. Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover absent.
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. And this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. And I want to thank everyone for attending today's hearing. The committee is now adjourned.